I'd like to bring to order the regular planning commission meeting of October 12th, 2023. If we would all rise and question the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one empire, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Susan, if you would recognize the order of who's not here tonight? We have three absences, which you probably already know about.
Yes, we do have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we're having a meeting. I need approval of the agenda for this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve Thursday. The agenda for tonight, Thursday night, October 12th, 2023.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Ballard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't believe there's any conflicts of interest of any material that we have on this agenda with what we have on this group of four of us here. I need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of 9:28, 2023.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes dated 9:28, 2023.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Ballard. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion approved. Are there any people or anyone here in the audience tonight to speak to us on something that may not be on the agenda that we have in front of us tonight?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Will you?
I possibly do. This is the first time I've ever been at a meeting and I was just wanting to address you guys. I was told by Mr. Curtis this would be the place to do it.
Well, if you want to address someone, please come up to the podium.
Yes, sir.
Address this room.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christopher Walker. I'm a resident of Oxford. I own four parcels east of Conant Gravel Pit. I own the north parcel of the Pollyanna Trail and I own the three south parcels of the Pollyanna Trail. My question is to you, I understand that there's a new master plan being made. I own an easement across the Pollyanna Trail. I'm the only one that owns an easement across the Pollyanna Trail in order to put a road across the trail to get to my back 29 acres. I was just wanting to address you guys to see if that was an option in the master plan, if it can be recognized. And also, the property west of me, the Conant Gravel Pit, on the master plan that exists now, it has the property that's adjacent to me parceled out in the future as one acre lots, and it has my 40 acres parceled out as two and a half acre lots. And what I was wanting to bring to your guys' attention is the property next to me obviously is going to be being mined for the next who knows how long with what they have going on. And if the township would consider my 40 acres to be broke down into one acre lots with my easement across that trail so I can, you know, future develop my property, that's basically all I'm here to bring that to your guys' attention and the possible outcome on the new master plan.
It would be my opinion, I understand what you're talking about, I understand what you're saying, and you have a legal description of that easement across that trail. I think what you're going to really want to be more involved with when we actively start looking at what we're going to do for the master plan, and we're going to, we're going to, we're not further into the agenda tonight, but we're going to have a steering committee established for the planning commission to then consider what we're going to do with the master plan in the future.
Okay, sir.
And it would be really appropriate for you to come to a master plan meeting and present your comments to that steering committee as to which direction we're headed.
Okay.
Now, this PC meeting tonight is not in that direction.
I apologize.
No, you're not.
I appreciate the information very much.
I respect your comments.
I'm nervous, I've never been in front of anybody like this to try to ask for something like this, and I'm doing this on my own. Pardon me?
I think you're the man that owns the window company.
I am.
Yeah, you put a windshield on my truck. So, and I remember your big pole building that you constructed back there.
Yes, sir.
So, I do know your property and I know where you're at, and those are good comments, and those are things to be considered down the road as to what we'll do with the master plan and how we want to utilize properties within the township. So, thank you for coming and speaking.
And I will keep myself up to date as to when those meetings are so I can make sure I attend.
Well, the first steering committee, he wouldn't be for that though, no? We're going to have some in the future, but we'll have a way to put that out, I mean, as to when we're going to be having those meetings, so keep looking for that.
I will. I'll keep in touch with Mr. Curtis and I'll also pay attention to the Facebook charter.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Kamada?
Great. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so, my name is JT Schutz, and I stand before this commission tonight as a concerned member of the community and a representative of Willow Lake's neighborhood. And I'm going to speak on behalf of some of the other residents of Willow Lake that are here, that have gathered here tonight. And we're here to express our strong opposition to the unofficially proposed large multifamily development at North, at 402 North Oxford Road. The development, while ambitious, raises significant concerns about its potential negative impacts to our environment, natural resources, infrastructure in our community, and overall well-being of our friends and neighbors living near the proposed site as well as the community as a whole. Pardon me. The construction and the operation of a large multifamily development at the site could have severe consequences on our local environment with increased traffic, light, noise, lake water, and other pollution, and changes in land use could disrupt our fragile ecosystem and potentially cause irreparable harm to the natural resources and wildlife. In addition, the proposed development could strain our existing community infrastructure like our schools, emergency services, our roads and traffic, water supply system, et cetera. In light of these concerns, we urge this commission to consider the long-term consequences of a proposal like this and to take into account the voices of our community members that will be directly impacted prior to any action to move forward with a proposal similar to this. We'd request a comprehensive environmental impact assessment through evaluation of the projects, our community's infrastructure, and economic stability. We don't want to obstruct progress in our community, but we just want to ensure that the developments in our community are sustainable, respectful of the environment, and are in harmony with the social and economical being of our neighbors, and we seek a thoughtful, balanced approach to development for the future of our neighborhood.
Okay, I don't want to cut you short on anything, but you're a little premature for us right now at this meeting with the idea that, I don't think we have any proposed development in front of us currently for that property on the township's portion.
I understand.
You may have some in the village, I don't know.
Okay.
And if we have that proposal for development on that property, would be the appropriate time to come in with those concerns that you kind of just explained to us tonight?
Indeed.
To give you guidance back.
Okay.
But we're just listening for input from public comment right now, so we did hear you, and I took note of it, and what was your last name again?
Schutz, S-C-H.
Schutz?
Schutz, like shoots.
Oh, Schutz.
Yes.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I tried to spell it right. Thank you for commenting.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone?
What was his first?
JT. Is there anyone else that would like to comment here this evening on issues that are not on tonight's agenda? Guess that's the easiest way to present it. All right, seeing none, then we're going to move into commissioners' comments if we have any at this time. I'm not sure that, Mr. Nolan, do you have your comments?
Yes, I'm just going to make comments on my commissioner's comments. I sit on the board, the PC board for the village. We have not seen that development at the village site. My understanding that development is on the village side as well as the township side and that they're going to try to work in unison with the two different municipals in putting that, those structures up. So, I would suggest, and appreciate you coming here, I'd suggest to visit the village council when we have a meeting at the village in the PC or even the council. And there's not a meeting this coming Tuesday night.
Thank you, I appreciate that feedback.
The second thing I'm going to add a little comment to is that Chris Walker, there is a Pollyanna Trail management meeting on October 18th, 3:00 PM at Addison Township office. I think I would suggest he come talk to the Pollyanna Trail Management Council at that time too with his concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Ballard, do you have any comments?
No.
Mr. Bailey, you don't?
I'm good.
All right, we're good, so we're past commissioners' comments. I have none at this point in time. We have no public hearing, we are into unfinished business, and at this point in time I'm going to turn that over to Megan. Discussion of the master plan.
Good evening. Megan Madison-Mannock with Carlo Wartman Associates, Township Planning Consultant. And so I want to clarify a couple things. We're starting the master plan process, and as you know, the master plan is the visioning document for the township looking 10, 20 years in the future. The planning, by state law, you have to update it every five years, and so that's why we're beginning this now, it was last updated in 2019, looking to have it fully updated by One of the agenda items a little later is a steering committee for community engagement for the master plan, that you would appoint the members of that. However, and I want to emphasize what their role is. Their role is not to create the master plan, that is the role of the planning commission. Their role is to assist with community engagement and guide in the best way to get the word out, how we do different activities to get as many people to the table and participating as possible. And we found working with steering committees that are bigger than a planning commission, usually more representative of the community, and get people on it who are those folks who tell everybody everything, and that's not necessarily your average, you don't necessarily have five of those on a planning commission, that's the reason to have those. So, they're not creating the master plan, that's your job with our assistance. They are the ones who are leading and guiding the community engagement. So, is that difference clear? But, tonight, we wanted to talk to you about community engagement and which stakeholders should be part of the process, because ultimately, you recommend, you create the plan, you create the master plan, and you recommend it to the township board for approval. So, if during the next year, we don't talk to people who you feel that it's key for us to talk to, then we're going to get to the end of the public hearing and we're not going to have a master plan to pass because we haven't talked to the right people. So, we wanted to start with you tonight to talk about what type of stakeholders. And in the worksheet that was in your packet I gave you, it talked about, it asked you to look and brainstorm different types of stakeholders affected, so those people who are most affected by what's going on, those who are in, oh my goodness gracious, I'm not sure how that happened.
Oh, it's so.
Use buttons instead of the mouse. Impacted, so those are folks who you would consult or involve, and they're going to be, they're, what happens with the master plan is going to impact them, it's maybe not to the same degree as somebody who's affected. There are those who are interested, and those are usually people who are expressing interests, maybe advocacy groups or other taxing entities or locally elected officials or maybe adjacent communities. And then there's also the people that you want to keep in the loop who are aware. Sometimes that's social media groups, sometimes that's the newspaper and whatnot. What we wanted to have from you tonight is your contributions as to which stakeholders we should reach out to during this process, and we want to bring those to the steering committee when they meet next week.
I think we, I mean, I tried to create a list, I think it could go on for more than what I originally started thinking about, but types of things that I feel that would be affected, I think we should talk to school administrators. I think that they're going to definitely have, they'll be impacted by whatever decisions we make as far as density throughout the community, either it be commercial or industrial or residential or whatever it is. I think things that become affected, in my opinion, when I look at my list, when I looked at affected, I said, the gravel mining organizations and businesses within the township definitely need to be communicated to because these properties that were mining gravel and extracting out of the ground now are going to be reclaimed in the future, that's obvious. And they're going to definitely need to be people that we need to communicate through, in my opinion. We need input from all these different groups. One of the things that I got thinking about, you know, people that would be interested, and I don't know exactly who they all are, but people that work in the community but they don't live in Oxford, they come here, they're employed, they're providing their families with what they need for how they can make a job work, and we have some industrial facilities in different places, even if it's a McDonald's or Coors or wherever the people work. I think they're going to be interested as to what we do for the future because of their employment. And so, for me, one of the major issues that, when I first thought about this, I did talk to Megan a little bit about land preservation and how do you provide for it and what we need to do for it. But another thing that got me, it was the impact that we're going to have with the roads throughout the community, the networking that we're going to need to make it work to where we can go from the community and come back to it, because some days it's pretty tough coming up 24 and some of the other avenues. I think the road commission is possibly another county input that we should be looking at as to who we communicate with, what we might want to do in the future. I'm not sure how to put that together yet, but.
So, a road commission, the road commission would be a stakeholder to look to probably MDOT too, if you're talking about the pure.
Well, because of M24.
Yeah.
I know that in the past, where I was employed before coming here, we used to sit down with people from the road commission on what their master plan was, on how many years out there proposing and what they're going to do with roadworks. The first meeting I went to, I thought I was reading the charts wrong because they had 2030 on the chart. This was quite a while back, and I thought, well, you guys have made, you printed the chart incorrectly, you're going, it says 2030, and they said, no, that's how far we're planning out. So, our master plan's for five years, and I thought, wow, they're looking at 25 to 30 years. So, I think the road commission or members, some of the people from the road commission would be beneficial to be people we can contact and try to work with. And I'm probably pushing out too much, but, you know, one of the things, and I don't know how we actually do it with residents and developers throughout the township, because they're aware of what we're probably doing, and they have awareness, and a lot of people, because I talked to a friend of mine that owns a business in Oxford, and he called me about something one day because he was reading Facebook. And I thought, oh, good grief, he's reading the township Facebook, and he's calling me to ask me some questions. So, I think that through that process, and I don't know how we actually link with it and how we do it, but I think the residents, it's a good way, another way that we have to link with residents and even business owners. And I'm not sure how that works, Megan, but.
Mr. Berger?
Yeah.
Would you say residents and business owners are in this affected category? In that they're.
Well, what I did was, I actually had affected and impacted, because they kind of like fall in a couple categories.
Okay, so you feel like residents and businesses were in both?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did try to put people of, like where I said, aware, when we said aware, I think those are residents, you know, they're aware of what we're doing, possibly by what they read and how they receive the information. So, with developers, they're affected, because whatever we decide with our master plan for the future and how we want to see the community stay balanced, those developers are going to be very concerned about that.
That's right.
And so, I mean, that's a critical component. So, I mean, I took that little page you gave me and just started writing my own notes on it.
Great, yeah.
I thought, well, we're supposed to do homework.
Yeah.
So, I kind of got it, I don't have it perfectly in my head. Local schools have to be connected to us, they're going to be impacted. I know when we bring the population up, in which we're growing at a pretty good rate right now, we're not at the highest rate, obviously, in the county, but we have all the properties that will become available for development, and as we do that, I mean, we might need more elementary schools, we might need more, so I don't, we got to get them involved.
Mr. Berger?
Yeah.
Would you mind if I asked the other planning commissioners to share and then looped back to you?
Yeah, that'd be perfect, I'm a big talker.
Mr. Ballard?
You know, I kind of, it started, you know, we were kind of jumping around a little bit, but I was wondering if we, if it possible, we could all maybe go from like affected and just kind of like read maybe the list that we have or.
That would be great.
Some of the things that we have, and then maybe go, because some of these things kind of do blend together, like sometimes I was like, well, that's affected, but that's in, but they're interested, but like affected, I put, you know, the residents, obviously number one is the residents. The second one was business owners. And I put local government because the, all of the things that they have to, they'll have to put into place, and then also affected was the developers and investors. So, I put those developers, investors, because they're the ones that are going to be building out, you know, what we, in the areas that we have.
Can I ask a clarifying question on local government? Was local government just local government within Oxford Township, or did that include the village and adjacent communities?
I included, so in that, I put the township and the village. So, I consider that to be, even though it is, it is separate, there's some, there is connection there.
Thanks. Mr. Nolan, what, that hasn't been mentioned, it was on your list for affected.
I would tack on with trustee Ballard is Leonard, Addison, Orion, and Brandon. Some way work with them because we're, they seem to be the hub around us. I know that we have the Village of Orion. And then there, when we talked about, there are a lot of different governmental entities that we could get hit at a finite area, and some of those were, which involves me, would be the Pollyanna Trail. There's a monthly meeting that reports can go back, feed through that, the village PC that trustee Ballard and I sit on, the village DDA would want to be part of that. I would think they would, put it this way, offer the information, and if the information is well-received, then it would help get more information, or help get our position out with the master plan. And then with the village, there's the council and the PC, so the council would be part of that. The library does a monthly newsletter, I can't, I don't know what else to call it, but they do a very good job with that, that we might be able to latch into that. And then, the other part of this was, is that we have a great deal of homeowners associations. We have one here tonight. Some are larger and some are smaller. I would think that the newer developments that have the homeowner associations can be reached through, possibly through our web system and through the township. I don't know how they have those set up at the, for their communication, but if you can link directly into the larger ones, not saying the smaller ones aren't important, but I know the Waterstone, I think, has possibly six separate ones, and if I can ask a question out loud, Willow has how many? One?
We have two boards, actually. We have the Leaks and the Shores.
Okay, so there, again, now we're branching out more and more, but it, just to present the information, it's kind of like your email. Sometimes we just let things go on the email, we never touch it until we have a need, and then there's, there would be a need. So, that's kind of my thinking on that, to build on Toms, I appreciate the businesses, the residential business owners, I can't read my own writing, the investors and the developers.
Yeah.
I know that we have had developers come into township and they've actually asked to be part of the master plan committee so they could give us ideas, so.
Mr. Bailey, anything on the affected?
I kept it simple, I mean, I broke it down to, you know, we have businesses, we have residents, and we have visitors.
Wow.
I mean, you can break down the various businesses into manufacturing and, you know, residents, different areas, different demographics, but at the end of the day, it's businesses, residents, and visitors.
Okay. All right. Mr. Berger, anybody on that affected list that we haven't gotten to?
No, because I think when they spoke a little earlier, I had written down neighborhood associations, because that's, that's one key ingredient. If I'm going to have a development right here put in next to me, when a couple people, even in the audience, got out and spoke about earlier, they're definitely affected. And they're, and so those people need to be part of this, the neighborhood associations, and they're settling the community. We have several active associations, so some we do not have active, but there are plenty to go after. I think we start, we have a start when you talk about affected. So, we did a school administrators, I think they're affected, business and owners, they're Developers are definitely affected. I like what John said about also maybe the township library to help utilize communication with a network of all kinds of people that come and go from there. Even my grandson goes to the library, so I thought, well, that's a young person, but so, maybe other people are there too. So, I think we have a start.
I agree. Okay, in terms of impacted, Mr. Bailey, who did you have on your list that's not up there?
As far as the impacted, I had schools, parks, churches, hospitals, clinics, municipalities, things like that.
When I went through the, they had trouble getting separated out.
That's fine.
Indirectly impacted would be kind of what I said before, and I'll keep it real short. All the surrounding communities, Leonard, Addison, Orion, Brandon. I like the road commission being part of, or reaching out to, or being communication. I know that when we did M24, the restructuring of M24, they had a person in charge that you talked to, and that, he made decisions. If we could find one of those persons, and there may be one for our geographic area, then that would be a home run hit.
Okay, great. Mr. Ballard?
So, once again, I put business owners, I put Chamber of Commerce, DDA, so that was the downtown business association. Some of the public services, some of the utility providers, infrastructure, and then environmental slash recreation. So, some of the are recreational, such as the Pollyanna Trail, such as those other.
Okay, so like the Pollyanna Trail, and also there is a joint, there's an Oxford Recreation Commission, correct?
Yes, it's separate.
Parks and Recs.
Yes.
Okay.
I have two things to add to that.
Sure.
You sparked some interest.
Mm-hmm.
We have the chamber that we need to include, we have a Rotary in town that we need to include, and then the Parks and Recs.
Are there.
Then if we branched out and worked on some other of the members' comments, is the websites or the churches where they have communications out.
Churches, okay.
The tie, the tie of all this, from what I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, is communication.
The tie is that, and also, who do we, who, on questions, who do we really want to reach and make sure we have one or two, two or three times back and forth? So, and you mentioned the Rotary Club, is there a Lions Club or an Optimist Club or anything like that as well that's active in the community?
There used to be an Optimist Club because they always had a golf outing every year, and I used to be in it.
The Lions recently disbanded, they just recently disbanded.
Yeah, they, I was going to say there's some elimination on some of it.
Bold reply would be another one, thanks for the, somebody jogged. Boulder Point would be another one. Thanks for the, somebody jogged my mind. Boulder Point's a pretty big outfit.
But the one thing, you know, when we talked about impacted and me, one of the early things that I wrote down, when I said utilities, I wrote down specifically water, sewer, electric and consumers. Because I know when we used to develop properties previously when I wasn't here, um, electric was a big concern. I mean, if we brought a big development in and we had land that was zoned with greater density and homes and things like that, the power grid has to be established to handle all that. And we have various power, uh, locations within the community in south of here and Auburn Hills and everything that bring it all this way. Um, and DTE is an important factor. I don't know if there's a, a direct representative anymore. I used to know the service planners, but I don't know them anymore. Um, and I think as, uh, the impacts to community leaders that are involved with those, with, whether it be water, whether it be sewer, whatever it is, and those departments that come from that, I think they're gonna be definitely, uh, impacted.
Okay.
Definitely.
So involve Mr. Sharp.
I would definitely want Mr. Sharp involved. Because we don't know, it really, I kind of looked at that plan that we had. We, I don't want to go too much in detail on that, about what we're talking about for sewer capacity and all that. But water and sewer are gonna be a big issue in the future.
Have I talked to all of you about impacted or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Alright, so interested. We've got the list that started by Mr. Berger, people who work in Oxford but don't live here.
Yeah, I mean, they're definitely gonna be interested.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's a tough one.
Yeah. Mr. Ballard?
So this is where I put the, uh, neighboring communities, because to get, you know, to get neighboring, uh, communities input. Um, so I also put healthcare. This is where I put schools.
Oh, somebody up here put medical, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. If I didn't capture it, please stop me. Medical providers.
Yeah, um, go ahead.
To build on his schools, we have a, we have private schools here too. So that might not necessarily mean Oxford Community Schools, but might branch out to the other.
Sorry. Um, I did put, so, uh, I didn't know how to phrase this, but like economic forecast, economic impact. Um, so, like, I don't know what type of group, but just, I, as a general totality, since I didn't have an answer for it yet, I just, what is, what kind of impact, what kind of economics do we want to see in the future?
So that's a good question to ask. And then we just got data, um, from Cobalt, who we subcontract to. Um, they gave, and that'll be in your packet and we'll discuss it at the next meeting. Um, but they had a gap analysis, so for retail, where a leakage analysis, basically what dollars are leaving the community, what are not. And then because you had asked about, expressed some concerns in the plan to plan meeting about retail, um, we asked them for what's called a void analysis, where they look at different chains across the nation and then give an analysis as to whether the odds of them working here and then also, um, some other factors in that. So we'll, we'll bring that to you. And then if you, if, at the next meeting, if you feel like you need more between that and the SEMCOG, um, data, we can talk about what other data to look into, to look into.
Does that also include like manufacturing?
Yes.
Industrial?
The, in general, it got, has some employment numbers.
I don't, the void, I don't think it does.
No, so the, the void doesn't, so. But it would tell you the num, where people are working in the community and then where people are, where people are predicted to, um, where, what, who's being employed here and in what areas. And I do think that SEMCOG does some projections, but we'll look into that.
But you're going to include the village in those calculations or is that separate?
They're separate government.
Um, I think that we already asked for the data and we asked for Oxford Township, not with the village.
You asked for township, okay.
Yeah, so. Alright, so back to interested stakeholders. Not that data isn't good. Um, but are there any other interested stakeholders that were on your list that we haven't mentioned?
It is, and some of the things kind of overlap, so in the same thing was kind of, environmental was, um, is in, in, investment. How, like, how would, how would investment come in or how would they be interested in? So that's why I put it in interested parties.
Interested parties in, in the environment or environmental preservation or?
You know, um, investment in, uh, investing in businesses within the community, building commercials, things like that.
Yeah, Megan, like when, when you look at, um, developers and you look at development of properties, I mean, they're, they're gonna be interested in what we're gonna do. I don't know who that communication should be given to, because it can't just be the one particular person. So there's all kinds of entities that would probably want to come here.
Yeah.
I mean, you got your Taco Bells, you got all these little different kind of commercial group activities and strip malls and stuff like that. As we grow, you know, and the Coney Dog Restaurants and all the stuff pop up. I mean, they're all gonna be interested in what we're doing with the properties to the north and, and through the M twenty-four corridor. So those are all gonna be affected by the interested people that want to know what we're gonna do there. And I don't know how we get to that point in time when we find those people.
A lot of times they find you because they're looking at certain numbers.
Okay, so they'll show up.
But also, we have relationships with developers and with brokers and things like that, so people that we know are active in the area, we can ask them as well. Um, and then, you know, being the, the township offices, we've seen a couple of, and a lot of times there are also your civil engineers who you see a lot through their plans and what they're doing.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Bailey, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I think one of the things I would add to that list is to include the, like, the real estate or realtors. Um, I mean, it's good to get all these feedback from the developers, but they're gonna come up and build the houses that they want. Is that what people are looking for? And that's where I think feedback from realtors, real estate, you know, that, I think that'd be, uh, valuable information to have.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Berger, I wanted to ask, you had, when we, we had a conversation before and you've been talking about land preservation and environmental preservation.
Yeah.
Um, would, and I had mentioned land conservancies and some of the partnerships that they had had with other governments in Oakland County. Would you want me to put those, them on the interested list to talk to?
I, I think so, because there has to be a, I'm sure there's an interest out there. I just don't know who the content people are. But I know that we want to try and preserve a nice balance. I mean, a lot of these people that come here come for that reason. And I don't want to give that up yet. I mean, I've watched what can happen in cities, like when I talked about the, the development of creating another place for wetlands activity to take place in another community that was, was derivative from development as far away as Troy. And it came out here to Oxford. So that's shocking. I didn't even know they could do that back in the day, you know? Create those, mediate those cases where you could do that. But, you know, Eagle, I'm sure is definitely involved with that and still many other places right now. So for me, I, who do we reach out to for that?
Well, I can put Eagle on the list.
Eagle?
Mm-hmm.
Or somebody similar to that or?
Well, I mean, they're gonna see it from the overall state perspective. I think there's also, um, there's Oakland County, um, planning. They do some work around, they do work around farmland and open space preservation as well. And...
Megan, what are we looking for from, from that interaction?
Well?
Interested side?
So on that interested side, if you have, I, I would, I would keep those folks, um, I would keep, I wouldn't necessarily reach out to them until we have solid goals and objectives. Because I think they can really help with implementation. So let's say in your goals, you decide that you would like to be more active in preserving open space or preserving farmland. Um, and generally, in order to have that done, you do need to be more active from the township side. Um, and some of it is as...
What do you mean by active? Active in?
So for instance, um, you have a open space development that's coming to, to you, correct? And that, that it's coming for a final plan, where they're preserving half of it as open space? You could be more active in making sure that that's kept, um, high quality, a high quality open space by linking that developer with the land conservancy and the land conservancy taking ownership and stewardship of that, of that land. Independence Township has done this quite a bit. Um, also, um, in Oakland County and in Washtenaw County, the county planning departments have helped property owners who wanted to put conservation easements or agricultural preservation easements over their properties um, in order to preserve that open space. Um, so that it's preserved in perpetuity.
It's more than just saying we're gonna leave this wetland or this area that's really hard to develop alone. It's, you're starting with more involvement.
You're starting to do more involvement. Now, from...
Because then it's for perpetuity. I mean, it goes on and on and on. Doesn't just, it's not just their temporary.
Right, and...
And I've seen that happen in Oakland Township.
Ah.
Uh, and I've seen it happen in a few other places, so they're great ideas. I mean, they take large acre portions and do it to a conservancy. I don't know, you know, in, in Independence, I don't have an awareness of where they've done it, but I'm sure that when Mr. Fisher was there as the, uh, direct supervisor of the community, he, he loved to talk about that kind of stuff.
Yeah, they, I think they preserved, I, I can get you the statistic.
It's just interesting because I want to know how we reach out to that. You said more than likely we'll wait a little while to where we see where we're standing with the opposite.
Once you determine what policies you want to pursue, I think those are great people to reach out to, to say, we'd like to do this. How do we establish partnerships? How do we establish linkages or connections?
Yeah, never comes back. Once it's gone, it's gone, you know?
It's hard to...
It's hard to bring it back.
It, it's hard to convert houses back to farmland, yes.
There you go.
So, um, okay, so anybody else, um, on interested stakeholders? Is there something on your list that you were thinking about that we haven't captured here?
I thought we did pretty good.
I think you did an excellent job.
I mean, I think we're doing, I think we got a good start going. I mean, I, I don't know. I think some of these things are kind of like combined. You know, when you look at affected and then you look at, you know, impacted, they kind of, they kind of combine with each other in certain instances.
My first go around on interested were the businesses on twenty-four. And we have, we have a group of them. In the township businesses on twenty-four, you know, we have that little corridor that we drove for our sign ordinance. It's, it's all fresh in everybody's mind, but you, you've got the, the hardware store, you've got the repair shop, you've got the car sales, you've got the plumbing shop and the bowling alley.
Yeah.
How do you tie those in and that would lead into aware?
Mm-hmm. Yep, oh, aware, we have a whole other category.
Yeah.
So who is on your aware list? Mr. Nold, you start.
I, I use that to catch off. Uh, I was more looking at how we were going to communicate to them. And the township has an internet site. We have a, we have a very active paper. We have the large homeowners associations and I'm not, I maybe should just say homeowners associations, uh, large or small. And then we go through all the different things that we touched a little bit on. I don't want to take the, the wind out of, we, anybody else's sail, but Leonard, Addison, Orion, Brandon. We have Boulder Point, we have the Chamber, we have the Rotary, we have the DDA, we have the Village, uh, council and PC. And then the, if, if possible, the local businesses website, if they have. Some of those businesses on twenty-four are small businesses and they're not, uh, don't have those things.
Okay. Alright. Uh, Mr. Berger, anybody unaware that we haven't listed?
Well, no, when he made names of the communities, I just wrote neighboring communities. Because one thing that's stuck in my brain for a long time, uh, we call it Auburn Mile. It's between Jocelyn Road and Baldwin Road. And on the south side is Auburn Hills and on the north side is Orion Township. Well, when Auburn Hills decided to do what they wanted with their property, it totally affected the development of what it forced Orion Township to then do on their side, which was the north side of the road.
Mm-hmm.
When they went to five lanes and brought that through there with the sixteen inch water main and all the rest of it, it just opened it all up. So the awareness of that happening next to you has to be out there somehow. And so when I said neighboring communities, because that's two communities right there, one side of the street versus the other.
Yep.
And when they built Auburn Mile down there and put all that in there with Costco and, and, uh, different restaurants and, and all the things they did, it forced Orion to then kind of redevelop what they were gonna do with their master plan. To then look at what do I want to do now on the north side.
Mm-hmm, and you wouldn't want to do the same to your neighbors?
I don't want to, but sometimes it just happens.
Okay, well, at least keep them in the loop.
Well, I mean, that's why neighboring communities are kind of important as that awareness of what we're gonna do with our stuff. I mean...
And we'll look at their plans as well.
Now, what I don't know and what I think about and where I think we can look at development in the future, but I'm not gonna talk development tonight, because I can talk too long. But we're, our border is Lapeer County, Oakland County on our north jurisdictional line. And there's a lot of stuff that could happen there. So you got the county that has to be aware as a neighboring community too.
Yes.
So that, that land is available for a lot of stuff, of the reclamation of all that sand and gravel mining operation stuff. So I look at lots of acres, thousands actually, that are gonna affect neighbors. I really want to know. That's an awareness factor for sure. I don't have a lot of other things now other than the fact that I wrote residents and developers, uh, as, as a comment, because that was in my earlier, uh, uh, documentation, but... And then the Facebook part of the township, I guess, that's an awareness that I, I think that we can utilize to help promote part of what we're trying to go to. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know how we do it, but I know we got experts here tonight that'll help us.
We have, we've looped CJM.
Good.
Alright. Who wants to go next? Mr. Bailey or Mr. Ballard?
Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Um, yeah, I had the, the social media side, um, uh, I know like here in Oxford, we've got a couple of various quorums. Uh, there's a pretty strong mom group and, you know, things like that that, you know, I think, uh, could be beneficial, keeping them aware. But at the same time, I know that they can also be a double edged sword because it turns into a, a hateful discussion, uh...
Yeah.
Very easily, so I, you know, it's one I would say be careful of.
Okay. Mr. Ballard?
I have no additions to what have already been said.
Alright. Well, thank you for the brainstorming. We will share this with the steering committee and I believe that is your new business.
Oh, that, oh, back to our agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I better pay attention here now. Uh, well, next on new business is actually origi, is to originate our steering committee. And we have a list of, uh, people that have committed themselves to joining in with us. And we need a motion to, uh, create that steering committee. You guys, you guys all have the list, okay? So I'm, I'm looking basically in new business, the engagement of that steering committee, we need a motion for those people to be listed and then accepted and we just gain that. How are you guys feel? So, some of the...
Looking to do the list, are you looking to reference the list?
No, you need to reference.
No, it needs to be referenced in the motion.
You need to reference the list in the motion. As the following, uh, members.
And then are we going to vote each member?
No, no, I want, no, I want to take...
Just state the list.
Just, just...
Just the motion, the list.
The motion and the list, and that's it.
Can we get some clarification before the motion though? Because one of the names has, looks like husband, wife, is it both or is it one more?
The Eric, I, I didn't know that.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I can provide some information. Um, the couple, it is a, a, a husband and wife team.
Oh, yes.
Said that one or other of them could come, not both. So they were willing to tag team, so...
Are you saying they're both gonna be on the list?
They, they would both be on the committee, but probably one would attend one meeting and the other would attend another meeting.
Well, I think we should name them separately as part of the list, or just Dave and Karen, uh, Eric.
I think either way is fine. I don't...
I think either way is fine. I don't think that's it.
Yeah.
It's not rocket science.
No.
Okay, I'm gonna launch the rocket. I move to approve the appointment of the community engagement steering committee of the planning commission members as follows. Ryan Austin, Melissa Castona. Melissa.
That one I don't know. I lost.
Kunelis.
Kunelis, Jim Feifield, Dave and Karen Hedricks, Drew Holt, Tim London, Linda Moran, John Nold, and Don.
Walsh.
Excuse me?
Walsh.
Walsh.
I have a motion. Do I have support?
I'll support it.
Good. Mr. Nold presented our motion, and it was supported by Mr. Bailey. I want to just, we can just do all in favor, right? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that is a motion that's been made. That was our number 11. 12 is communications. We have committee reports, and to be honest with you, I don't know that we have any. So at this point in time, do we have anything more that Carolina Mooreman wants to say, to see me? Because we're into engineers or planners reports.
No, we've nothing more to report. There haven't been any pre-education meetings lately.
We have a question.
Yeah, we win next week, so.
He just has a quick question.
What's our next steps?
Next steps for your master plan is at your next meeting, we will bring data for us to review. And also, we take a structural look at the existing master plan, and are gonna ask, be asking you some questions about the format of it. Anything else, Mateo?
No format, some information possibly to remove or reduce on the data.
And you've said this before, but for my small mind, how does the steering committee fit into this?
The steering committee is going to guide community engagement. So at their upcoming meeting, we will be asking them to look at a draft survey that would be an online survey that would go out. Once they've looked at that, we could also bring that to your, a draft of that to you in, at your meeting at the end of, at the end of this month, hopefully to get that out November, December. And then also, they would just help to design community engagement. And we would help to, them put together a community engagement plan, which would be done by their next, approved by their next meeting in November. That would come to you for information, and then we would start to execute that.
And then you're the person that's gonna fold it together with the PC, the planning commission at our meeting?
I'm your link.
She's the director.
Understand.
That's how I look at it.
Well, I, trust you, Ballard, I just wanna make sure that you understand.
She'll direct us.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thanks for that clarification. No, I'm in the loop.
Yeah, I would expect some heavy lifting in the, in the next couple of months that for every planning commission meeting that you have, that there would be some item about the master plan.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll look to get you a schedule of what those would be going out at your next meeting as well.
I was trying to explain to my wife tonight that we do this until probably the end of 2024. She goes, what? I said, it takes a long time to put something together of this nature. I don't know when we're gonna be done.
It, it does take a long time, however, at the very end, by state law, there is a 63-day period that when adjacent communities are looking at the draft. So at least at the end, we will have over two months of.
Timetable?
To, to rest, where you won't have.
Timetable.
Yeah, a break.
I think you did an exceptional job tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I see nothing left on this agenda, so we're gonna close this meeting at 7:52, it looks like up there, I think. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.